Regular meeting, November 2nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I'll call Ms. Jones, please.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, mayor's comments. I just want to welcome everyone here tonight who has anything to do with the project or from the community, and thank you for our police officers being here to keep us safe. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item five passes 3-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
None tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognition, city events.
Good evening. I just want to touch base with you guys on the last event that we had, which was the trunk-or-treat. It was very successful. Want to thank everyone for coming out for that and all the participants, all the businesses, and everyone that was a part of the event. We had well over 1,500 kids that came out. We had several businesses that went through 10 pounds plus candy each. And then the movie in the park that evening is probably our best night that we've had. We had probably close to 150, maybe plus, people out at that movie as well. The next event that we have is the Veterans Day Celebration. It's going to be at the Fairview Middle School this year on November 11th, and it's going to be at 11:00 AM with refreshments prior to the event for the veterans. Then after the veteran celebration ceremony, there's going to be a small parade that's going to begin at the high school, go down King Road, onto Fairview Boulevard, and then go back into the high school. So we're expecting good turnout for that. If you'd like to sign up for the parade, feel free to reach out to me and we can get you signed up for that. Then the next event that we have is the Christmas Parade on December the 2nd. That is at 10:00 AM. We're still accepting applications for that. You can contact me here at City Hall for that. And then later on that day, we're going to have the caroling pictures with Santa all at the Triangle Village. And it's going to be from noon to 4:00. That's going to be a great day for that as well. Then we're going to end the evening with our Christmas tree lighting event. It's going to be a little bit smaller scale this year, but we're definitely going to have some lights and everything like that here at City Hall for everyone to enjoy, along with the high school band, weather permitting, as well for them. And that will begin at 4:00 PM and last until about 5:15, 5:30. That's all I have tonight, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Item number eight, staff comments. I was going to let you do it under staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I also want to add on to, piggyback on to what Richard said. We also, if you've noticed, the police department has had tents at the events, and they, I can't remember the total, but I know they raised $361.15 on credit card sales for Shop of the Cops. So anything you see a police tent up at an event, the proceeds go to Shop of the Cop. Also, Fire Chief Hughes wanted me to request a work session before the November 19th meeting. It's in regards to the selection of the RFQ candidate. And they want to have them present. It's also going to be on the agenda, but we just want to have a work session, talk about the process, let you meet the firm and before the agenda item on the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, consent agenda. Item 9A, minutes from October 19th, 2023, Board of Commissioners regular meeting.
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number 9A passes 3-0. Item 10, old business, there is none tonight. Item 11, new business, A, Resolution 67-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing Piedmont Natural Gas Company to perform open-cut excavation along Northwest Highway. City Planner.
Good evening, Board. Piedmont Natural Gas has submitted to the city a permit application to be able to open-cut excavate down Northwest Highway to install a 4-inch gas main that would serve future developments. The reason that they're on our agenda tonight is the Fairview Municipal Code directs them here in Chapter 2, Section 16-203. Open-cut excavations beneath paved roads or streets for installation of utility pipelines, cables, or conduits is prohibited within the city limits except for when the proposed pipeline is over 12 inches. This is a 4-inch pipeline. A connection is required to an existing pipeline. In the opinion of the Public Works Director, the location of other existing infrastructure makes boring jacking or tunneling not safe or not practical. An emergency repair is required or when the Board of Commissioners approves. So there is a representative for Piedmont Natural Gas. From our position as planning, engineering, and public works, we would prefer that no open-cut excavations occur within the bounds of the pavement within Fairview.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second for further discussion.
Anyone representing? Okay, so the reason I made a motion to approve this, after my review of the area, this part of Northwest Highway is in bad repair and does need to be paved. So in my opinion, gaining the access easements needed and trying to avoid cutting down mature trees. There's already utilities underneath this road. Also, we would save taxpayer money by having Piedmont use this to go under the road. They will be paving half of it, and that will save taxpayer money, also avoid cutting down these mature trees. And since there is already utilities under this road and because of its disrepair, I see this as a positive.
So is this on the opposite side of all the trees?
The, this actual, the line will be southbound, and so it is. If it does come out of the right-of-way from where the street lies, I do believe that it will push it into private property, which easements will have to be granted throughout there and private agreement. And that will, you know, if there are trees in the way, it will not be able to be in the right-of-way. It will have to go to there. And so that brings in a couple of other things in the equation. If there are, you know, utility poles, telephone poles in the way as well, they will have to adjust it accordingly to that. And by the way, I'm Stephen Francesca, Government Community Relations Manager at Piedmont Natural Gas, Tennessee. I'm also joined by Nate Miller. He is our Distribution and Construction Manager. And then also Brennan Anthony, who is our Project Distribution Specialist as well, who's over the project.
So you're asking to open-cut the entire duration at 5,500 foot? Or is it ebbing and flowing in and out, or is it just straight cut?
It's a straight cut, so it will not, you know, so that is the problem. So with our GIS technology and then map overlaying, whether it's satellite and showing the trees in the landscape or not, it doesn't line up. It is approximate, but it will be in that lane of traffic and traveling the whole way through there. Now, it does have to branch off to go serve the subdivision mains that are within the subdivision outside of city properties. It's all private property. The roads don't even exist there right now, but they will have to branch off there in a couple of areas, but other than that, it stays wholly within the street outside of those points right there. And that, a lot of that too, that's common practice for us. It's safer. It's not, you know, on the side of the road where other utilities are typically going in. You know, it's clearly marked through our technology too and tracking. And anytime that something else is going into the street or another subdivision or utility coming through, it's down to the inch to where they can actually locate that pipe after it is repaved. And it's typically the safer route than going anywhere through private property or anything. And that's where you start having some underground utility strikes and incidents that happen there too.
And this pipe is located pretty deep. It's not like, that's not a question.
I'll consult, how deep?
36 inches.
Yeah, that's not a question. I'm making a statement.
That's okay.
It'll be 36 inches deep, and the trench will be approximately two feet wide. If you kind of imagine the southbound lane, it'll be kind of in the middle of that lane. It kind of won't be aligned with the, you know, kind of follow that green pattern that's on the screen.
And saw cut as well.
Yeah.
You encroach on private property. Who is going to be the representative for the people in a negotiation?
If we weren't speaking, if we're speaking outside the scenario where we're in the street, we have a land agent that would contact all the homeowners and go through that process.
But our goal is not to encroach on any private property. That's why I want to say in that lane. There's a very, very, the width of the right-of-way there is very small. It's basically, that's why the middle of the lane is kind of the line that we chose to not embark on anybody's private property.
And one other point of consideration, if I may, so if we do seek those private easements and then for some reason y'all do widen to another lane or widen the road, our line will be within that area that you're more than likely going to have to widen the road on if for anything unforeseen scenario comes up too. And we'd have to go back and look at that and make sure that it was all in accordance with that road widening project.
And if the road gets widened, it would be under the road anyway.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm just saying avoiding cutting down mature trees and gaining access and also saving taxpayer money because they're going to be paving. So this road is in disrepair. We're going to have to pave it anyway at some point. So it's more like a match instead of us having to pave the whole thing ourselves.
So we've identified Northwest as a collector road, potential three-lane in several locations. If this area was to be widened in 10, 15, 20 years, whatever the timeframe would be, would we just widen the road over the existing gas line? Or would we probably relocate it and incur the cost at that time?
There would be no relocation, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Nate, that, you know, through the typical process where you'd remill down the road and short up with all the exist, with the addition, you'd come back in and just do the paving process. At that point, we're three feet deep, would not come into play unless y'all were digging and for some other reason for that street widening with putting in sewer or any other kind of infrastructure, which we have policies and lines are marked and everything.
And before we get started, we could consult the engineers to make sure what the proper depth. We need to go forward, we need to go a little deeper. It may be for profiles and road profiles and things like that. So we can consult with them beforehand to make sure we're at the proper depth. Three feet is kind of a typical depth for gas main. That's what our procedures say. It can always go a little bit deeper in case something comes into effect that could be in conflict. We don't want to relocate in the future. It just causes more conflict with the city and customers. We want to get the proper depth originally. We'll consult with the engineering group to make sure before we start.
In the future, if that were to occur, we would work to try to not go over top of any of their gas main to avoid it being underneath the roadway.
So it could be a future hindrance or cost to us if we're trying to work around it in a future plan. And then, so the main looks like it shows it's on the, if you're headed towards Highway 96, it'll be on the right-hand side. That, the big piece in the middle is one of the proposed developments. Could you not cross the road there and go into the right-of-way on that side and be in proper compliance for future?
That refers back to the approximate area where it actually shows. In relation to that, it's actually will be coming from 96. It's in the southbound lane. So it looks more like it's on the far-right lane. It's actually coming in the southbound lane down. So it will be in that lane on that side.
Okay.
It's kind of depicted in the northbound lane, but it will be placed in the southbound lanes. It will be oriented on the other side.
Well, could we not capture the right-of-way there? Because it's going to be a dedicated right-of-way with the plat of the subdivision. Could we not run it and not do a road cut there? Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, in that curve, in that 90-degree curve you're talking about.
With that entire corner parcel, maybe it's...
Yeah, at that point, we would be able to, yes, we would be able to get, we wouldn't have a road cut at that location.
And you...
Brendan?
Are you unable to capture what you need from Highway 96? Or you need to loop your gas line there? Are you unable to bring just the service line from 96 and not extend from Stable Acres? Would you be able to capture the gas you need if you just came from 96 down Northwest Highway?
And just for clarification, you mean stop right there where we're just referencing and not completely?
Well, in order to service the proposed new developments, you would come down Northwest where it's a developer-owned property, city-owned property, and then would come into another developer-owned property, and you'd be in right-of-way the entire way. You wouldn't have to cut any road. And so then you can service that development, and then it would stop in that big turn after it services that area.
Oh, so you're saying not lay in the street and go through private property, the wooded area? Or, I'm sorry.
Do you have a point?
Yeah, do I have a pointer? I don't know if I...
Right now, you're proposing...
Just that we're on the same page. I understand, I just want to make sure we're talking on the same page.
They're running a sewer line right now in a right-of-way and in easements. They're not cutting the road down that same path. So could we not be in that same right-of-way?
Is that to the further north area?
That's from Highway 96, which is the northern state route.
With the northern border.
And they're coming down to that piece there. And so unless you're just telling me you're trying to loop to your 2-inch line at Stable Acres to get flow or whatever, but could you get the gas service that you need and you wouldn't have to cut any road? And you could stay in right-of-way, right-of-ways that are already being affected?
Yeah, in order to feed that subdivision that needs service first, we have to feed them from the southernmost point, which is on the bottom of the screen, and loop it in there to feed them first. And then we can bring, we will eventually bring gas down from 96 and loop it and connect it there in order to feed the multiple developments that are already in place and going to be in place that we have been...
But that's my question. If you have a main on 96, could you just extend it from 96 right now and eliminate this road cut?
I mean, without having the research done on that, theoretically, it could be possible. You know, we're not in the same ditch. We don't go the same route as sewage lines or anything like that for safety purposes. But it does stop the likelihood of anything from that route from 96 down to wherever yours comes back out on the road, your scenario, that none of that will be able to be served. And so if any of that did have to be served back at some point in time or something else goes in or we're missing something that we're not connecting while we're envisioning this right now, we would still have to run another main up through the street to get back to it at some other later date. And then that may be after the street's already redone and repaved, what it is. And we may want to give it to him.
Do you have the overall...
Can he show that? Can you give it to him to show what he's talking about?
At some point, you'll have a new road coming through Belvoir there, that middle piece. Let's see if it... Yes. Okay, here, so this road will eventually run. So if you run your main this direction, north to 96, that's where they're running sewer right now. They've already removed some trees. We've got a three-lane, like a 70-foot right-of-way planned as a collector road. And so if we could get in that right-of-way, and it's going to service, there's another project there that's being proposed. If we could service that project, come all the way down to Belvoir on this corner, and then you could run into this right-of-way, because this is a development, this right-of-way here, not in the road, to here. And then if these people want to be serviced, if you want to make that connection, you could. But that eliminates the curb cut and captures all of the proposed developments.
I think something I would add to it is those parcels he was just pointing to, how are they currently serviced? I mean, do they have a, are they running on gas? Are they desired to be running on gas?
Either propane or no gas. I've already checked that out.
It stops it.
So the service stops whenever the improvement to Northwest Highway will begin?
Will be, yeah.
So we have a regulator station as well on 96.
We've heard about the regulator station. I wasn't here that night, but...
Yeah, but there's been a lot of talk about that, where it's placed, and we're trying to get it to the proper location. And that's a project that's in, and that's kind of why these two projects are kind of overlapping. That project was taking longer than the one to be able to feed the subdivision from the south first. And that's why we're coming this direction, and then we were going to come back and meet all together.
I think...
But the timing was kind of a little bit difficult because at the beginning when we were, this has been going on for, you know, approximately three years.
I think distance-wise, it's pretty similar length.
Yeah.
It's going to, and that's where you're trying to service where. But if our code specifically states that you can't do cuts and surface cuts in roads, and we wouldn't allow you to build a new road and put a gas line underneath it, it's just hard for me to wrap my head around why we're going to cut down that road, shut down that road when there's alternatives that may have already, right-of-way is already in place, right-of-way has already been disturbed, that we could possibly do without cutting down the trees that we're talking about. Nobody wants those trees to go down through there. And so if we can, if there's another alternative, instead of cutting right through the road through there.
Yeah, well, I think the, it would still be a mix. Anyway, we would still have to be on Northwest Highway. Brendan just pointed out the upper-left portion of, right there, all the way down to where the next bend that goes eastward, yeah, all the way down, down more, right there, that's private. Land easement, that is not city easement.
That's, that is a property that you're servicing that when he records his plat, we'll have right-of-way to Northwest Highway.
Right, yes.
So if it's servicing that project, why would it not run in that right-of-way? So he should allow you, that right-of-way is going to be there when it's platted.
I think we were in an easement. I didn't want to interrupt you, but yes, sir, we are. We've already worked out with that developer, and we will be laying in our property out of the road through the 90-degree angle there.
Well, see, that's, we started the discussion with all 5,519 feet were going to be in the road. And so that's, it's not, I guess, clearly defined. But if we could come from that north side 96 and come down, because all of this up here is future proposed development parcels, where they've already obtained some access right-of-way for public sewer. If we could capture that same path, because I think we had, our plan is like a 70-foot right-of-way for a three-lane road, and so we'd have 10 or 15-foot of utility access on the other side. So can you guys, if I'm saying something wrong, please correct me, but...
We love to lay that. That's what we prefer to do. We don't typically like to lay in the road if we don't have to.
Yeah.
It's just the limited right-of-way coming from and trying to feed the first development was our first concern because the upper area wasn't, the infrastructure wasn't ready yet. And now that all, if all that's been obtained and there's availability...
I don't know that, but I know there's sewer line going in right now.
I mean, there's ready, there's proper right-of-way. There's, we lay in there to feed from the north. But then again, we have to probably do another analysis to verify the loads and with our system planning group to make sure we have enough gas to feed that. And the reason we want to tie it in is just because with gas, you want to usually tie in systems. Because you want anything dead-end, because once, if something were to get hit, you're going to lose everything from the dead-end if something were to get hit. So we usually like to tie everything in. So there's less disruption to customers if there was an emergency or something like that. That's why we want to tie, we want to tie it all in for our, you know, just for the system planning piece and just how we operate our system.
Would you like to defer until the next meeting and give you a chance to go look over that?
Well, that's definitely an opportunity there too. But I know, you know, with the developer, and I don't know how long and what the turnaround time would be to figure out all these incidentals and opportunities. I don't know what that timeline is. If we're looking at something for, you know, to have gas ready for these subdivisions and all the work, that's something that will be taken on that. If we can get something done, I believe if we can defer to, what is it, two weeks every other?
Yes, yes.
That's a possibility while we look at that scenario. But we also run the risk of delaying that property, you know, or this a couple of months if we have to go back and start the whole process over, but...
What's the status of that subdivision? What's the need date for the gas? I don't want to start having a need date, but I don't know their foundations. The storm boxes and all that are sitting up there, there's no, so they're actively working. They're still clearing land. Okay. I guess one other question would be, can we get a confirmation of the right-of-way? And if there's room for us to lay in that right-of-way from 96?
And I don't know that for a fact. I'm just saying, I know there's sewer going down that road. Somehow sewer figured it out without having to cut up the road. And so can we also figure that out, you know, similarly? If we can go through that 96 path, I don't know if the right-of-way was obtained. We gave an easement on some of the city of Fairview properties to allow it to run through there. But there should be a better path than cutting open the road when our municipal code says you can't cut open the road.
Do you, do you do that process cutting the road in other places?
Yes, mayor, we do it in just about every other scenario. It's always better unless it's a distribution or a transportation line, which operates under a higher pressure. We typically prefer to be in the street. Like some recent examples, you know, where Bellevue, Tennessee, where we're doing some crossing and putting in a transportation line relatively close. It was a T-Dot project, but on Franklin Pike, we were in the right inbound lane the whole way there with the lane shut down with appropriate traffic control there. Again, different projects, but just, you know, trying to compare them of how we do it on a daily basis.
In an area that has a lot of pavement, obviously, we don't have a choice. In Nashville, we don't have a lot of choice. Typically, we would like to lay outside of the right-of-way in a grass area. So if we have to go take it out in an emergency, we don't have to rip the road up. Sometimes we're restricted by right-of-way, and in this case, that's what we're restricted by right-of-way. We can't, there's nowhere else to lay.
Yeah.
And it would be, in order to get easement along all those residences, it just wasn't feasible. There, I did express that, could we try to get an easement from the south going to the north? And it was just not feasible with the amount of residents and land we'd have to have.
I know, I know that I've been called by many residents asking that it not go through their property, and they're going to put up a fight, and they don't want the trees cut. So I can't, I can't get on board with it being done any other way except what you propose because I don't want the trees cut and I don't want, I've heard from residents that are going to put up a fight about. And I guess this other direction that Vice Mayor Butler's talking about, that would leave a portion of that open where they don't have access to gas, right?
That's correct, mayor. And so everyone that's traveling along that, along that road that is on propane right now, they have the ability... they have the ability to convert over to natural gas. Propane is typically about, you know, especially around certain times of the season, depending on price, price fluctuation, three times more expensive than natural gas. So they would be able to convert, if they so choose, to natural gas and turn over some of their system to that. And then one other that will kind of be a down, a down point for if we did use the easement. So everything from that easement to where it ties into the subdivision, that's just taking a risk. I don't know if we'd be able to serve anything else coming off that right of way, making a private agreement with a, a landowner, taking more easement to branch off of that line to another subdivision. There's no guarantees that we'd ever be able to come off that. Excuse me. And also, too, one other concern y'all mentioned was the traffic. So this will be different than some of those aforementioned projects that we had in Davidson County. The traffic here, of course, during the day, it will be to, to y'all specs and code, you know, what we're allowed in the hours for the traffic control. But at, outside of those construction hours, the, both lanes are reopened up. So you'll have full traffic capabilities during the construction process. And that means also for, in this case, the rush hours.
And I know that in our community right now, we have things under construction where they have flagmen out, where they route people into other lanes. So that's not something that doesn't happen.
Are there any other questions or concerns that we can address before we proceed?
Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Item LA, item eleven A fails two-one.
Matt Mass, a couple of questions, just under procedure.
No.
No, all right, thank you.
Item eleven B, discuss and, discuss on residential commercial building permit fee increase, city planner.
Our building permits were looked at by previous staff and it has been asked by Vice Mayor Butler for us to readdress our building permit fees. Our, our current structure places us at a dollar fifty per square foot for a single-family residential building permit. Those building permit fees place us relatively out of place with the rest of the municipalities within Williamson County. And I'd like to bring to you a proposal, a resolution ordinance, I guess, for, at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, with a proposal to increase that fee to a dollar eighty-five per square foot for new single-family residential building permits. And our current, year of 2023, so far this year, we've issued a hundred and seven building permits. With the increase to a dollar eighty-five, the average home in, in Fairview for a building permit in twenty-three this year was twenty-five hundred square feet. That would increase the building permit cost approximately eight hundred and seventy-five dollars on average. And with that money, we would like to direct that to the Park Fund. And going through and evaluating our master parks plan, it was brought to the city's attention that the parks are severely underfunded. As many people know, we have Bowie Park. We also have Veterans Park. We also have a piece of property that is over off of Elrod Road in Northwest Highway that is reserved. It was donated to the city as a potential park location. With this funding, that would help increase our parks budget and help us increase our amenities at our park locations, which was a direct reflection of the Parks Master Plan. Do y'all have any questions or what would you like to see as far as moving forward?
Thank you, sir. No, that's, uh, we are, we are the cheapest permit by about fifteen hundred dollars in Williamson County amongst municipalities. The POPC Committee, the Parks Operational Plan Committee, was tasked with overseeing the Parks Master Plan. The number one initiative was to find a, a, a funding source to try and fund some of the projects that are in the Parks Operational Plan Committee. That was, that was pushed and signified, and that's what created this, where the facilities would go up forty-two and a half, go to the general fund, forty-two and a half percent to the facilities fund, and fifteen percent to the Parks and Recreation Fund to try and generate some of that revenue. So that's, I think it's well needed. A lot of municipalities in Williamson County visit this annually based off cost inflation for the consumer price index.
And that would be a piece that we would like to incorporate as well to address annually all of our fee schedule, including planning and engineering fees. We are significantly below the rest of the county whenever it comes to our fee schedule. And that impacts everything that we're able to do. And I think that it would be a, a wonderful addition to be able to help fund some of our projects within the park system.
Mr. Greer, do you have a graphic that you can show the, the board of the, of all our neighbors? Like Spring Hill and Franklin and Columbia and Nolansville and what their fees are? Because that's what they really need to see before they set it at one eighty-five.
I do. I've provided it to you in your email and a graphic was handed to them.
It's not in the packet.
A month ago.
A month ago. I haven't seen it. Can you send that to me so I can see it?
I can send it over.
But if it's just discussion, I'd love to see it on the agenda. I think it has two readings as a, it was an ordinance that originally came through. If we need a workshop to dig into it more for discussion, that was mentioned by another commissioner before. And then in, and if, if staff thinks, the last ordinance had changes on every, all of the cemental fees. I think Ethan thinks that this would be separate. We can handle this one, then we can tackle the other ones first of the year if they need review. And so, but I, I think it's well overdue and a good thing to explore.
I have a question, Ethan. Is there a scenario where that Bowie Park would get a certain percentage? Veterans Park would get a certain percentage? History Village would get a certain percentage? Or have y'all worked on that in any?
Currently, we have not. We have just addressed it as including it within the park system.
And I think that could be tasked on us from the Parks Operational Plan Committee of what tasks we want to jump on or put in, in order and start to put those funds to work.
Right.
Is that committee still? I didn't know that we still had that committee.
We don't. That was, that was part of the Parks Operational Plan.
Well, this also could be handled during the budget process and in the minute budget. And we could allocate funds for particular projects at that time as well.
Is that all? Item twelve, roundtable, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just got a, two or three brief things. Tom, have we moved forward with the signs in Castleberry lately? And what's the upgrade on the, the status on that right now?
Thank you, Mayor. I talked to Public Works Director Todd Bratcher. I believe we're about there. The, I'm, I'm, I think we're having, just like everybody else, having, uh, production issues. And I think we have found a, a provider that is, can do something similar in cosmetic appeal, but not quite as expensive and then also easier to repair. But I, I can, I can get you a more detailed report and have that to you at the next meeting or I can email it to you, to the board, whichever you prefer.
Next meeting will be fine. Thank you. The, I just want to thank the service from all of our employees that they do, do for the citizens. Would like to see the continuing of the patrolling the neighborhoods to hopefully hold down any crime or any speeders in our neighborhoods. We do have a, a, a lot of children now that we, we seem to, our population is loaded with a lot of children nowadays. And some reason or another, they seem to play closer to the streets. So I do appreciate everything y'all are doing there with all your patrols in the neighborhoods. And I've already had some people thanking me for having y'all take care of that. And I know I've addressed it with the chief at the last meeting, but I want to thank y'all for continuing to do that. And here again, thank all of our city employees and would like to welcome. We have a, a planner. And I imagine Tom might want, or Keith won't might want to introduce her before we leave here tonight. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, welcome, Bree. I think she's hiding back there. Welcome, glad to have you. And then tomorrow night, first round of the playoffs at the high school for football. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing for me. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.